Sure. Carrie Rohmeyer. Lynda Kennedy for Danlaszarecki.
Here.
Michael Flick.
Here.
Jacob Williams for David Jackaman.
Here.
Marilyn Kramer.
Here.
Carl Nieberlein.
Here.
Rob Pierce.
Present.
Shelley Reed.
Here.
And Alex Velto.
Yeah.
We have a quorum.
Great. So tonight, we're going to elect officers. And with the change will go into effect at the next meeting. So we are going to an elected chair from Washoe County. I nominate Rob Pierce.
I second it. Thank you. Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Well, thank you very much.
Great. And then we'll take nominations for a vice chair from the City of Sparks.
Yes, Madam Chair, I would like to nominate Marilyn Kramer as Vice Chair for the coming year.
And I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right. Thank you. And now we'll salute to the flag. Rob.
It's in the back of the room. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next, we'll approve the agenda. Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, general public comment. We're opening to public comment and statement.
Madam Chair, one moment. Jessica Prunty for the record. I just wanted to make a comment on the record in regards to our public comment process here, regional planning. Under the open meeting law, public comment rules are set by the body and embodied in the agenda itself. And so we cannot deviate from how we take public comment from the agenda. Our agendas currently require public comment to be made in person or submission of written comments in advance of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, next, we're looking for approval of the minutes from June 2, 2025?
Do we have any public?
Oh, did we have a general public?
An attorney?
Yes, just filling in for Dan Lazarecki.
Okay, thank you. I'm speaking regarding our public notice of this meeting and how the public can interact with this. Not an attorney, I'm just a citizen. But it does say that to have and hold a meeting by remote technological systems, such as you're holding a meeting, there's people not present. Everyone has to be able to participate, not just a one-sided participation. And in the instructions, it said that there would be no public comment available online. So I'm a little confused. That's why I asked who that was. So it does say that the technology systems are supposed to enable the citizens to speak remotely, participate, vote, or take action regarding any meeting, even though they're not physically present. So that's one item I wanted to speak to. And the second item is regarding NRS 281A-139. Bicunary interest as defined means any beneficial or detrimental interest in a matter that consists of or is measured in money or otherwise related to money, including, without limitation, anything of economic value, including cash, payments of any other money which a person is owed or otherwise entitled by virtue of any statute, regulation, et cetera. I believe your member, Alex Velto, is a member of this local legislative body. And I have asked that he not be allowed to vote as he accepted funds publicly, $2,500 from the developer of Ranchera. Period. Locust Development gave him money. So I'm asking that as a member of your legislative body, he is not allowed to vote or comment on the Ranchera pending item. Thank you.
Thank you. Did we have any other public comment at this time?
We do. We have one more. Sandy Roth.
Hello. My name is Sandy Roth. I live in Reno and I am a Sierra Club volunteer. I want to address the Stonegate project and urge you to postpone making a decision on the Stonegate project until you get more concrete information about the project and more relevant guidance and policies. There's no need to rule on this project immediately. Responsible wise and effective regional planning means waiting for accurate information and necessary policies, not simply rushing forward. I was at the Reno Planning Commission meeting concerning Stonegate, and it was quite clear that the job numbers Stonegate presented had no basis in actual plans and were little more than fiction. In fact, Stonegate has indicated to some residents and city officials that they are planning on using some of the land for data centers. Data centers have fewer permanent employees than almost any other building of comparable size. Not thousands or hundreds of employees, but maybe 10 or 20. This would not stimulate the local economy. Plus, among other things, data centers can consume a lot of energy and a lot of water, but heavy demands on water treatment systems due to water contamination adversely impact air quality with onsite generators. It is important to learn exactly what Stonegate will do with this land and to learn how that will impact our infrastructure, our water resources, our economy, and the surrounding community environment. Please take the time necessary to obtain all necessary information and guidance to plan wisely before making land use changes of this scale. This doesn't mean rejecting all development or all data centers. It does mean engaging in a responsible and informed planning that benefits and protects the health and welfare of area residents, other businesses, and our infrastructure and natural resources, especially our water. A decision on the Stonegate project should wait until the City of Reno finalizes its data center guidelines and policies. At a minimum, the decision should wait until after the scheduled Truckee Meadows Regional Authority's August 20 meeting on data centers and the October Reno meeting on data centers. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comment at this time?
We have one more. Megan Ebert.
I'm also giving public comment about the ability of people to join meetings virtually. I have many constituents that would have liked to join virtually tonight to give public comment regarding the Stonegate development, but we're unable to attend in person. So I just wanted to put that on the record. I will have additional public comment at the Stonegate agenda item.
Thank you.
All right. That is all for this item.
Great. Seeing no additional public comment, we will move to approval of the minutes from June 2, 2025. Do we have a motion?
Mrs. Robb, I'll move to approve as written.
I'll second that.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, very good. Now we will go to business of the day, starting with a training segment on self-certification.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Nate Kousha for the record. This is our fun item for the night, our RPC training item, Gen 8A. And this is just a general overview of the RPC training requirements and what we ask of you guys. I know that some of you have already done your training and filled out the self-certification form, so you don't have to do it again if you're already done. But we have some new commissioners and people might not have finished, so just kind of being aware of that. So just some background, NRS 278.0265 does say that the RPGB show prescribe a training course of at least 12 hours for RPC members, and it must contain the state statutes and regulations and local ordinances, resolutions, and regulations concerning land use planning and the provisions of Chapter 241 of NRS. So with that, we do have a webpage for your RPC training requirements. And you can go here. And you can see here that there is a button for the self-certification form. All right, this explains your training. There's a button for the self-certification form. It is password protected. We'll send you a follow-up email with that password and the link to the webpage itself, so that you're aware of it. We have the required readings, which should cover part of your 12-hour training. And those ones, we ask that you all please look through those things. That includes the NRS chapters, things I just mentioned that are required, as well as the regional plan itself. And then we have other optional materials, things that we think could be useful. And in addition to these, if any of you have some items that you would like to recommend to add to our training portal, go ahead and send those to us. We can take a look at them, see if they kind of fit what we're looking for, and we can put them up on the site for other commissioners to use for their training hours as well. So we have had commissioners in the past who have done that, so if you have any of that. Additionally, any planning-related conferences or symposiums, things like that you attend, can count towards training hours as well. So if you attend the APA Nevada or the APA National Conferences, you can also use those for your training hours. So the only other thing here is we are asking that you guys go ahead and go into the pool-packed website here. We've created accounts for all of you. And we'll, again, in the follow-up email, we'll have your account information and your passwords. You can log in here. We're asking you to please look at the open meeting law training on here. It's fairly short, so you should be able to get through it fairly quickly and be able to use that for your training. And then additionally, there is a Roberts Rules of Order course. It's quite a bit longer, so we're not requiring you or asking you to do that one. But if you would like to use that towards your training hours, it's also a good thing to be aware of as part of this commission. So that's all I have for you. If you have any questions, you can ask them now. You can reach out to us at a later time. We're happy to answer. And please look for the follow-up email with all the information I just mentioned as well.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Okay. Next, we'll go to our first public hearing. And since there are members of the public looking to give public comment on various items, how it'll operate is there'll be a presentation from staff, then it'll go to public comment, and then it'll go to the board. So our first is on the Ranchera PUD.
Thank you. Good evening again, Commissioners. Nate Kousha for the record. So the item before you right now is a City of Reno Master Plan Amendment for the Ranchera PUD. So overview on what this amendment is. So this amendment is seeking to change the master plan land use on a roughly six-acre site from parks, greenways, and open space to single-family neighborhood. It's located west of the intersection of Alabella Way and Silver Charm Way, east of Bartley Ranch Regional Park. You can see on the regional form map there. It's kind of down at that southwest end. On April 2, the City of Reno Planning Commission approved the proposed master plan amendment with a vote of five to one. Following that, the Reno City Council heard the proposal at their May 7, 2025 meeting and unanimously upheld the recommendation of the commission to approve this master plan amendment. And there you can see that bottom motion is the motion for the master plan amendment for the City of Reno Council. The vote was seven to zero, unanimous approval at the Reno City Council.
May I speak on this quickly, Madam Chair? Hi, Jeremy Schiff for the record. I just want to point out that in the staff report, the information we'd received initially, we erroneously listed the vote. But we did watch the video today, and we have the official adopted minutes. This is an excerpt from that. And on the master plan decision, the vote was seven to zero. That is what happened. Thank you.
Correct. Yeah, so the master plan amendment is kind of the only portion of this that we are hearing today at regional planning. There are other components that go along with this amendment, like a PUD handbook and such, but we don't hear that at the regional level. That is solely at the City of Reno. So our recommendation is that the master plan amendment does conform with the 2024 Truckee Meadows Regional Plan. So overhead, you can see the existing and proposed land uses. The existing is on the left with that PGOS in the green. And on the right is the yellow going to single-family. It's roughly six acres. Since 1995, the Ranchera area and the associated PUD handbook have gone through various modifications. It initially started out as a predominantly single-family and equestrian community. More recently, since about 2015, the area has been transitioning from equestrian land uses to increased residential. In fact, in 2023, the equestrian facilities were removed from the property. And although this is a loss of open space, the subject site is currently vacant and not in use. So overhead is our aerial map here that shows the equestrian facility is still there. However, we have more recent imagery from 2024 showing that the equestrian facility is no longer there. So this is policy RC9 of the regional plan. And this is the five factors that the RPC must consider when evaluating for conformance in the amendment. And we'll walk through the criteria going on. So for population growth, the most intensive zoning allowed under the single-family neighborhood land use, according to the City of Reno Master Plan, is SF8, which allows for eight units per acre. So this would allow for an increase in density on the proposed parcel to a maximum of 48 dwelling units. We at Team RPA do do our analysis on any land use change at the maximum potential and have found that the 48-unit maximum results in a minimal increase to projected housing capacities for the region and does conform with the regional plan. This does not mean that 48 units would be approved on the site. It's a theoretical maximum that we do our analysis on because that's what a proposed land use would allow for. The actual unit count would be approved through the City of Reno through their PUD approval process. For regional form, the subject property is located in the Tier 2 regional land designation. And this land designation is where we expect to see generally less dense development occurring at suburban levels with some higher-density nodes. And there's a variety of residential and non-residential uses within this tier. And additionally, public facilities and services are generally in place or planned for in Tier 2. The surrounding area of the subject site is currently developed, and the request for a small increase in density within this area is consistent with Tier 2. Additionally, the requested land use change from the PGOS or Parks, Greenways, Open Space to single-family is compatible from a regional perspective with the surrounding area. So for facilities and services, they are available and adequate for the small increase in density requested, again, a maximum of 48 units. And it will not impact facility and service availability and provisioning elsewhere. The community, for natural resources, the community access to trails and parks within the area will be preserved, as well as the provision of trail connections and open space buffers. The removal of the Parks, Greenways, Open Space designation is eased by the many nearby parks outside of the development, such as Bartley Ranch Regional Park, which is almost adjacent to the subject site there. That kind of green in the top left of the map here, the aerial imagery, is the Bartley Ranch Park. And it does have, oh, with the equestrian facilities gone, as mentioned, the parcel is vacant and unused by both residents and the public. And no further natural resource impacts were identified as the subject site, as well as the surrounding area, is already developed. For regional coordination, as we do with all of our cases, we work with the various parties involved throughout the process. We coordinate with the City of Reno staff throughout the process, making sure we're aware of all of the discussions and concerns throughout. And with that, there's a motion overhead. And myself or City of Reno staff are available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Now we will open it to public comment. I believe we have some folks here who want to speak to this item. Okay. Right. Yes, that works. So we will open it to questions of staff, but not discussion.
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Velto. Can I make a disclosure?
Yes.
Commissioner Velto, for the record, I am disclosing what was noted in public comment that at some point in time when I was campaigning for a different office, I received a contribution from Locust Development. While this is not a required disclosure, out of abundance of caution and after consulting with legal counsel, I'm making this disclosure. That contribution to a political race would not affect my impartiality or my willingness to vote for or in favor of this project. Neither would any political contribution in a prior race affect my decision on any application. I'll view the facts objectively and look at the project as it's presented. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for staff regarding this project as presented? Okay, seeing none, we've got a public comment. And I believe there's some folks who want to get public comments.
We have Penny Whitaker.
Madam Chair, Jessica Prunty for the record. If everyone could please state their name before making their public comment, that would be appreciated for our record.
My name is Penny Whitaker. I live in Ranchera. And I'm really just making a statement. Carrie Rohmeyer had come to Ranchera before the last meeting and had said to all of us there, whoever was there, that we needed to negotiate with the investors. And the investors were not interested at any point for us contacting them, trying to come up with some agreement. I'm just stating a fact. I think it's totally unfair. It's very unfair, the whole meeting that took place, where the residents had three minutes to make a statement, and then the investors would get up and say whatever they want to. And then the board would ask a few questions. They would answer. We never could say anything, and they were telling lies in many cases. Okay, that's it.
Good afternoon. Audrey Keller, resident of Ranchera. Does Madam Clerk have the ability to put up the map that was sent to you through public comment? Not the map that was shown by staff, but actually our community map? You should have all gotten a copy of it, but if you could put that up. I'd like to speak to that directly after your staff report. Well, that's an interesting one, but there's that one. Yes, Ms. Kramer, that's the map. Sorry to ask that, but we didn't get to see the staff report in advance, so.
The clock is actually ticking, so I don't know if we can...
Okay, well...
Okay, we'll restart. Great.
Thank you very much. So in public comment, what I would say is that the staff report looks very nice. I wish I would have been able to see it, that it was posted early enough before, so we could have had some response. However, when the staff talks about the Equestrian Center, which is really what's before you, which is PGOS zoning to single-family home, he says, "There we go." And that's in the green. The green is the equestrian... They used to call it the equestrian properties. They're large lots, one-acre lots or more with custom homes. Just so you know what you're looking at and what you're being told. The blackout line over the green is basically the six acres where the Equestrian Center used to be after they demolished a beautiful facility. That land was originally in the PUD for seven one-acre lots or just under one acre. Seven homes was the alternative. And now what the city council members voted on and planning commissioners voted on was 29. Okay, well, that's a multiple, maybe four times more. But when your city staff says, "Well, the maximum is 48," in your staff report, I understand from staff's point of view, 48 is nothing. But from seven to 48 is a great multiplier of density. And the second map that you held up, Mr. Smith, the developer provided that map showing that they couldn't even get 24 homes on that lot. So our concern is always that once something gets published in a public entity such as yourselves and you approve it, that 48 number will appear, and the developer will then go back to city council and say, "Oh, we're going to go for the maximum, and therefore, we're going to put in high-rise units to accomplish 48," because they could only show 24. So I have a great concern for that. And I think that while it's in all of our interest to make sure that this community, Ranchera, serves the greater county, it doesn't mean that the county should change the nature of the open space that was intended for Ranchera. Ranchera had beautiful open space, and we've lost now six acres. The other reason you should see this map is, see those yellow areas that are circled? Those are not owned by the Ranchera Homeowners Association. Those are owned by the investors and other people that bought the Ranchera Village and the Revel Community and the Retirement Home and the Clubhouse. When you drive up, you say, "Look at this beautiful open space." Well, guess what? That is not homeowner's space. They could cover that with concrete and build a giant resort like they're threatening in Lakewood. So I'm telling you, what you think you see is not what the homeowners are getting. And I hope that you consider that in your consideration and your vote, and I thank you very much.
We have one more. We have Nancy Baba.
Good evening, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Nancy Potawos Baba. I live in Ranchera, and my husband and I also own a property in a different part of Ranchera, which you use as a rental property. We bought into Ranchera because we loved the open spaces. We loved the proximity to Bartley Ranch. It was a sense of being in the country, but being close to doctors and shopping and other things that we needed. We're not horse owners. We're not riders. But we really enjoyed having the sense of being where there were horses. Having the Equestrian Center and then the track for the Equestrian Center demolished was sad. We still can access Bartley Ranch. There is an equestrian area there. But the area that we're looking at now, turning it into high-density homes is totally out of character with the surrounding area. Some homes, the homes that are closest to that property are half-acre to one-acre lots with one home. The other side of that, okay, so to the north of it are the, basically, the custom-made homes on large lots. Just to the east of it are luxury condos that, again, are very different in nature from the proposal. You know, to have some housing there is understandable. To have six houses or eight houses there is understandable. 48 is totally ridiculous, and even 24, 27 would not be in keeping with the nature of the property that we bought into. Our property values are, I'm sure, being affected by whatever changes are going on and would like you to give it some serious consideration, not to just pass it through. Thank you.
Thank you. That is all for this item.
All right, thank you. We will close public comment and go to discussion. And does the board have any comments or thoughts on this item?
Yeah, but I'm confused about the number of homes going on. I thought it was not to exceed... Can't hear me. Sorry.
This is Commissioner Velto. I have some comments. I can't hear if anybody else is speaking. I apologize.
All right, well, we'll go ahead with the in-person comments and then move to the online commissioners.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, I just had a, I was confused about how many homes are intended. I thought it was 29.
So for our land use discussion, when we're looking at change of land use, yet again, we analyze it off the potential maximum, which that land use would allow for a potential maximum of 48 units. That being said, there is the PUD process that goes through the City of Reno. I believe my understanding is they're looking at 24 units. We could confirm with City of Reno staff, but that's my understanding of what the proposal is at this point. But yet again, that's sort of out of our purview. That could change through their process, and we don't have a say in that. So the potential that we're looking at is 48. I believe the proposed, sort of through that process, is 24.
Okay, that makes more sense based on the map that we had. But I'm seeing also 29, so I don't...
Yeah, it was a confusing meeting, let's put it that way. There was a lot of discussion and a lot of different numbers and stuff thrown out, and I believe what was voted on and approved was 24 units. We can confirm. Yes, I'm getting a nod from City of Reno staff that 24 is what was approved at the City of Reno.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, do you have any other questions? All right, Commissioner Velto, you had some questions?
No questions. Are we in discussion or is this strictly question?
Discussion.
Thank you. Commissioner Velto, for the record, I feel comfortable with making the findings. I think a lot of the issues that are raised in public comment, while I understand their concerns, I think a lot of these were addressed at the Planning Commission level, and I'm not seeing anything different here that would make me reach a different conclusion. So I feel comfortable making the findings.
All right. I'm not as certain I'm comfortable making the findings, having watched the city council hearing on this particular item after I had been to Planning Commission, but I have confirmation that this is 24 units and not one more than 24 units. Is that correct? 29 is an incorrect number. Is that... 24, okay. And with that, I suppose we need a motion, or unless discussions, anybody else have discussion?
Madam Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion. I didn't hear anybody else's discussion. I move to find the Ranchera PUD amendment to the City of Reno master plan in conformance with the 2024 Truckee Meadows Regional Plan based on the findings listed in the staff report.
We have a motion.
Commissioner Velto, I'll second.
We have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, thank you. All right, next we have item C25-19, a regional plan amendment for the Silver Lake Timoya gas capacity improvements. We'll begin with our presentation from staff.
Cool. Good evening, Commissioners. Chris Tolly, TMRPA. This item is a conformance review and regional plan amendment for the Silver Lake Timoya gas capacity improvements. And that case number is CR25-019 and RPA25-002. As noted, the proposal is a project of regional significance and regional plan amendment. And we'll cover the details through this presentation. The Reno Planning Commission approved the conditional use permit on May 8th of this year, and the Reno City Council sponsored the regional plan amendment on June 4th, again, of this year. Finally, regional planning staff recommends that the proposed PRS and regional plan amendment conform with the 2024 Truckee Meadows Regional Plan. The gas regulator station in Maine are primarily located on the Sierra Sage Golf Course, and that parcel number was 55401001. The line starts at the proposed gas regulator station on the northern extent of the Sierra Sage Golf Course and heads approximately 4,700 feet south towards and along Silver Lake Road. Regional form map is on the right-hand side of the screen, as you can see. The proposed utility site is located, again, the northern extent of the Sierra Sage Golf Course, which we can see. There. And that is the neighborhood map now on the right-hand side of the screen, showing the dot towards the top, which is the proposed natural gas regulator station, also a regional utility site per the regional plan. And then the proposed gas line, which isn't required to be in a corridor or reflected on Map 3 of the regional plan, but that is shown in blue going down to Silver Lake Road. The proposed gas regulator station in Maine are considered PRS as they will operate above 100 pounds per square inch, or PSI. The proposed gas regulator station is considered, again, a regional utility site and must be reflected on Map 3 of the 2024 Truckee Meadows Regional Plan. And then to go over the review criteria for policy RC9, which we also saw in the previous item, we'll step through the analysis contained in the staff report on the following slides. In regards to population growth, this request includes no change in residential density and will not change projected housing capacities. In regard to regional form, the gas regulator station in Maine will better serve current and future residents and will not modify the existing regional form. The proposed project will not require provision of public facilities and services. As noted, the gas line will provide system improvements and reliability to Envy Energy's customers in the North Valleys area. In regards to natural resources, proposed gas regulator station in Maine will require minimal construction activities and therefore, and also being located in the existing Sierra Sage Golf Course, therefore will not likely impact natural resources. And finally, TMRPA ensures regional coordination is at the forefront of our work, and we coordinate with jurisdictional staff and other relevant entities during the conformance review process. Regional planning staff did provide an initial review memorandum for this particular case. And now to go over the policy, the seven, I guess, review criteria for policy RC10, which addresses the regional plan amendment portion of this. And the points we raised or made in the staff report are essentially or very close to what we see in this section of the staff report, too. So I won't add a couple of points, but won't restate what I've already mostly done. So in regard to regional capacities and growth projections, proposal to amend Map 3 of the 2024 Truckee Meadows Regional Plan to add, a regional utility site is not anticipated to influence or impact regional capacities and growth projections. And then in regard to number six, as previously mentioned, the new utility site will provide additional capacity to adequately serve existing and future customers in the North Valleys area. When analyzing the case, with the vision, goals, and policies of the regional plan, staff did not find any conflicts with the proposed amendment. And then on to the proposed motions, which again, staff is recommending that the proposal conforms with the regional plan. There are two motions on the screen, which address a project of regional significance and a regional plan amendment, and these are also shown in the staff report on pages 24 and 25 of the packet.
Thank you. We'll open it to questions from the board. Do any of the Commissioners online have questions regarding this item? Looks like we have no questions, so we will go to public comment.
We have quite a few for this item. Oh, sorry. We actually don't have any for this item.
Okay, seeing none, we will close public comment. Now we will go to discussion. Any discussion on this item? Okay. Seeing none, we will close discussion and look for a motion from the board.
This is Kennedy. I move to find the Silver Lake Timoya gas capacity improvements PRS in conformance with the 2024 Truckee Meadows Regional Plan based on the findings listed in the staff report.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes unanimously. Now we'll do a second vote for the regional plan amendment.
Madam Chair, I move to adopt RPC Resolution 25-02 regarding an amendment to the 2024 Truckee Meadows Regional Plan based on the findings listed in the staff report.
Madam Chair, second.
Perfect. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, now we'll move to item D, which is another regional plan conformance review for Stonegate. And we'll begin with the presentation.
Good evening again, Commissioners. Chris Tolly, TMRPA. This item is a conformance review for the Stonegate Heinz Ranch Amendment to the City of Reno Master Plan. And that case number is CR25-018. Starting with overview of the project, and this will go on for a few slides. As noted, the proposal is an amendment to the City of Reno Master Plan and also a project of regional significance. And we'll cover the details through this presentation. The Reno City Council adopted the proposed amendment at their May 21st meeting. And then additionally, the Reno Planning Commission heard this item on April 2nd, 2025, or of this year, which resulted in a technical denial, and that vote was three for and three against. But as this was a... That motion is a recommendation to the city council. The item continued on, and the staff of Reno Planning Commission, or the Reno Planning staff reflected what the vote was at the Reno Planning Commission meeting. Got additionals. Finally, staff is recommending that the proposed amendment conforms with the 2019 Truckee Meadows Regional Plan, and we'll get to that particular part to you a little later in the presentation. Now continuing on, the project is located, or the subject site is located north of US Highway 395 and west of the White Lake Parkway and partially south of White Lake and US 395 and Cold Springs. And the approximate size is 1,767 acres. And it's all located within the Tier 2 regional land designation. And then on the right-hand side of the screen, we went from the regional location map to looking at the neighborhood map. Again, this is showing the subject site and some surrounding areas. And to go over the existing, and then we'll get to the proposed land uses and their acreages. So again, the overall subject site is 1,767 acres, and this is going from 41... Current, what is existing is 41 acres of industrial, 188 acres of suburban mixed-use, 475 acres of mixed neighborhood, 172 acres of single-family neighborhood, 39 acres of multifamily neighborhood, 337 acres of large-lot neighborhood, 485 acres of parks, greenways, open space, and then 30 acres of no-land use, which I think is essentially 395 right-of-way. And then to go over the existing, it's not as many here. Or the proposed land uses, 923.3 acres of industrial, 54.6 acres of suburban mixed-use, 385.7 acres of single-family neighborhood, and 403.7 acres of parks, greenways, and open space. And we've got a few of these, which was, this particular map was included in the staff report. And we've got some additional ones, too. We'll zoom in a little bit on this next one so that we can see the existing and proposed land uses a little bit more clearly. And we can come back to these if there are any questions. And then to look at the percentage change, we'll go, I'll just step line by line. Single-family neighborhood currently is around 10%, and that's going to a little over 20. Large-lot neighborhood currently 19%, going to zero. Mixed neighborhood, 26.88% going to zero. Multifamily neighborhood, a little over 2% going to zero. Again, this is reflected in what I just said. Industrial is going, or suburban mixed-use is going from a little over 10% to a little over 3%. Industrial is going from 2.32% to just over 50%. Parks, greenways, and open space is going down a little bit, from 27, approximately 27% to almost 23%. No-land use, again, the 395 right-of-way, I believe, is going from 1.7% to zero. And then to provide additional context, as we included in the staff report, we looked at kind of the life cycle of what regional planning has seen since the annexation of this land into the City of Reno and the subsequent master plan amendment at that point in time, which I believe, again, was around 2006 is when that went through. So we see on the left-hand side, the previous land uses is prior to Stonegate, prior to the Stonegate PUD. And then the middle, existing land use, that's what we have currently. Again, we went over the acreages, and then the proposed on the right. And the point that we're raising here is that the proposed land use scenario, what they're going for, is very similar in terms of what was previously existing on the site. It was primarily industrial, and then it switched to being primarily residential. Again, all this information is reflected in the staff report. And then switching back, as is being proposed, to industrial. And we can come back to this map, too, if we need to. Continuing on, the original Stonegate PUD was reviewed also as a project of regional significance for exceeding the multiple thresholds. The thresholds, that includes employment, housing, sewage generation, water use, traffic, and student population. Those thresholds are reflected in the regional plan and also state law. And then the proposed amendment is being considered as a PRS due to the increase in the number of employees, and we'll see this in a slide or two, greater than 10% over the existing basis. So when the 2018 Stonegate case went through, the proposals that were put forth in terms of employment, housing, that essentially established the basis for us to look at the PRS thresholds. And in this case, as we'll see when we look at the table that was included in the staff report, they are exceeding the threshold for employees. So with that said, finally, the proposed amendment, assuming it is found in conformance with the regional plan, will reset the existing basis for the PRS thresholds, which we'll see here. So we have a percent change similar to what was put forth in the table for the land uses. So again, the existing 2018 thresholds triggered, all of them. And same here, when we're looking at 2024, it exceeds all the thresholds, but with the exception of employment, they've gone down. So employment is up considerably, and what we have is 293.5% increase. And when we're looking at housing, sewage, water use, and those go down around... I guess I could just read them. 73%, 43.6%. Water use down 60%, traffic volumes, as reflected, down 17.8%. And then student population generation by the development down 81.6%. And we can come back to this also if we need to. Okay, moving on to the findings. Again, this is policy RC9 of the 2019 Truckee Meadows Regional Plan, which identifies the five factors the RBC must consider when evaluating conformance. Given that this proposal was submitted to the City of Reno prior to the adoption of the 2024 regional plan, the Stonegate, or the project proponents or the applicants to the City of Reno, elected to be processed under the 2019 Truckee Meadows Regional Plan. So as is typical, we'll step through the analysis contained in the staff report on the following slides. So in regards to population growth, this request proposes to change land use designation for the subject site from being primarily residential to primarily industrial. The Stonegate PUD approved in 2018 allowed the creation of 5,000 residential units, and the changes being sought would reduce that number to 1,350. My apologies, I didn't, my apologies, I didn't put in, or I believe we'll cover it, but in terms of the proposed residential units, square footage for the retail component of this, as well as the industrial, if those don't pop up here, I will state them. The TMRPA estimates that there are approximately 46,000 potential units available in the Tier 2 regional land designation. This is considering region-wide, so not just... This is considering region-wide, so not just in Cold Springs or the North Valleys. This is Tier 2 throughout the entirety of the region. Given that Stonegate, the Stonegate PUD is located in Tier 2, this amendment would reduce the overall number of available approved units to approximately 42,350. The most recent land use model forecast provided by TMRPA for the Regional Transportation Commission's travel demand model targeted 26,217 housing units to build in Tier 2 by the year 2050. Again, that's looking region-wide, not just in the North Valleys area or Cold Springs. This target is consistent with the population projections from the 2024 Washoe County Consensus Forecast and tracking of spatial location of new units over the past 20 years. Thus, the change in units and the Stonegate development will not limit the ability of our region to theoretically meet the housing demand within Tier 2 over the next 25 years. Moving on to regional form, so as noted, the subject site is located in the Tier 2 Regional Land Designation. Subject site was primarily intended to be for industrial, following an amendment to the City of Reno Master Plan in 2006. In 2018, the original Stonegate Amendment changed the overall intended use of the site to primarily residential, and that included 5,000 dwelling units. The proposed change to the master plan will reestablish the industrial land use designation as a primary use with a single-family, both attached and detached, and multifamily residential areas, and provide for commercial and retail uses. The proposed amendment also includes 403.7 acres of parks, greenways, and open space. In material submitted by the City of Reno, it indicates that the actual densities and intensities are estimated to include 1,350 residential units. Of those, 800 are single-family detached, 150 are single-family attached, and then 400 multifamily units. Approximately 11.75 million square feet of industrial space and 210,000 square feet of retail. From a regional perspective, these changes will improve the balance between residential and employment opportunities in the Cold Springs and North Valleys area. There is adequate supply of residential units as supported, to support the forecasted growth in Tier 2 over the next 20 years, as previously explained, with a large portion of those potential units forecast to be in the North Valleys area of our region. And that would be upwards of possibly 15,000 units in that area. Regional planning staff believe that the trade-off between residential units and jobs will be beneficial for the Cold Springs and the North Valleys area and will facilitate a meaningful improvement to the jobs-housing balance in this portion of the region. And just to revisit the land uses, again, this is existing, give me a break, existing and proposed, going from primarily residential to primarily industrial. And to go over public facilities and services. The proposal is estimated to lower the overall impact of public, to public facilities and services, including potential water use, wastewater generation, vehicle trips, and student generation figures. For the public facilities and services, the subject site is anticipated to utilize the Great Basin Water Company for municipal water delivery, and the Cold Springs Water Reclamation Facility for wastewater disposal. The stormwater drainage management flood control improvements will be conditioned and required during the future development phases. Likewise, transportation improvements will be determined based on the future development phases. Finally, the impact on schools is being reduced, and the Washoe County School District anticipates being able to accommodate the students generated by the proposal. And here are some of the highlights from the analysis performed by regional planning staff. This is the first ones in regarding, in regards to water. Given Cold Springs is a closed basin, using the water resources inside the basin through the Great Basin Water Company will help to maintain the existing water balance. The required use of water from the Truckee Meadows Water Authority under the Stonegate PUD scenario would have, or would, does require water to be imported into the closed basin, possibly as much as 2,500 or a little bit more than that acre-feet annually, which would create the need to identify and permit a method to effectively handle the effluent generated from the wastewater treatment process. Material submitted identify the reduction in overall water use from, again, approximately 2,500 acre-feet annually to just over 1,000 acre-feet annually. Regarding wastewater, the requested amendment would reduce the anticipated wastewater generation from approximately 1.5 million gallons per day to approximately 75, or 750,000 gallons per day at build-out. This reduction in wastewater generation volumes will also reduce the extent of improvements required as a byproduct of the proposed development at the Cold Spring, Cold Springs Water Reclamation Facility. Currently, the water reclamation facility is processing approximately 4,000 gallons per day of wastewater. The treatment plant is permitted to process upwards of 700,000, 700,000 gallons per day. However, the treated effluent disposal is permitted for only 5,550,000 gallons per day. But this reduction in water and wastewater generation is a beneficial trade-off, given the cold, given the Cold Springs is a closed basin at this, or not a closed basin at this time, but an appropriate trade-off at this point in time, given the proposal. The determination is related to the hydrologic analysis, the closed basin that is currently being collected by the Western Regional Water Commission, the Truckee Meadows Water Authority, and Washoe County. It is anticipated that upon completion of the hydrological analysis, there will be mitigation requirements coordinated between each of the jurisdictions and water purveyors. And the mitigations or conditions would be utilized to, utilize at the appropriate step in the local jurisdiction planning entitlement process. And then the final point regarding transportation. The proposal is estimated to reduce the average daily trips by approximately 18%. Trip estimate is going from just over 60,000 per day to just below 50,000 per day. The increase in estimated number of jobs in the basin and reduction in the possible number of residential units is viewed as beneficial change, again, by regional planning staff. This trade-off will increase the probability of a reverse commute. Instead of everybody going into the core of the region, there will be people going into Cold Springs as the employment opportunities increase. Additionally, the increase is, unemployment associated with the proposed amendment will bolster the jobs-housing balance in Cold Springs and provide for, provide the potential for Cold Springs residents to work closer to home. In regards to natural resources, overall, the proposal is not anticipated to significantly impact natural resources. The proposed change from primarily residential to primarily industrial is an overall reduction in the scale of the proposed development. The change is anticipated to reduce water use, wastewater generation, and vehicle trips. These reductions support related policies such as NR2, Resilient Region. Additionally, the increase in the number of jobs available in the Cold Springs area means there are more opportunities for residents to find work near their residence, potentially reducing vehicle miles traveled. Through the iteration of land use for the subject site, natural resource considerations have been a significant consideration, including the mitigation for the loss of mule deer habitat and the preservation of a federally protected plant. The review of map four, Development Constraints Area, shows that a portion of the subject site has natural slopes over 30%, which is a development constraint area. And these are areas, these identified DCA slope areas will be located in the parks, greenways, and open space land use. My apologies. Finally, the subsequent development application process, such as tentative maps, use permit, or grading permit, there will be opportunities for each of the entities, such as the Nevada Division of Wildlife, to identify specific concerns and/or conditions regarding natural resources. And then in regards to regional coordination, TMRPA ensures the regional coordination, again, is at the forefront of our work. And we coordinate with jurisdictional staff and other relevant entities during the conformance review process. That certainly is highlighted through this case. And finally, regional planning staff provided and multiple initial review memorandums for the case. And on to the proposed motion. And I meant to highlight this in the previous case too, and I think we want to do this moving forward, but the regional planning commissions, this more or less a note contained in the legal requirements section, but regional planning commissioners voting against a motion of conformance should specify what parts of the proposal do not conform with the regional plan and why. And this will be applicable to, to each of our cases, not just this one. With that, the proposed motion is shown on the screen or on page 52 of the packet. This does conclude my presentation, however, TMRPA staff, City of Reno, and I believe the applicants too, the City of Reno are also here to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. So we'll begin with questions from the board, and I do have one. So I will start with, at the NAB, which was the Neighborhood Advisory Board Meeting, there was mention that of the industrial land, which there's a, you showed 900% increase in industrial zoning, would be data centers. How would that change your evaluation of public services and infrastructure?
That's a, that's a great question. And what we have essentially worked through, and this will be looking at the public facility side as, I guess permutations of what the industrial, the resultant uses. I guess I'll bifurcate my answers and say that in, in one hand, the zoning level and set. That is something unique to, like we saw with the first case, unique to the local jurisdictions. Due to the fact that this is, also triggers the PRS requirements, part of what, or we knew it would, part of what we were asking for at the beginning, was an estimation of what uses they believe, the applicants to the City of Reno believe, would locate on the site. And that is what led us to the vehicle, vehicle, the average daily trips, the water use, number of units, and the other, the components that factor into the use of the land, but also the public facilities and services. So we really looked at a range of possibilities in terms of the use of the overall site. I think forecasting that all 800, whatever it is, 800 acres would be used as data centers doesn't seem like that is particularly feasible. And I would invite, I would invite the applicant to the City of Reno, if this is the appropriate time to speak more in depth about that. But we looked at a range of possible use types for the site and that generated various vehicle trips. And if it were to be all, not necessarily data centers, but low number of employees per, per square foot, upwards of 5,000 square feet for employee, the, the total number of jobs generated by all, the entire implementation of something like a data center would be in the neighborhood of 2,000, 2,500 jobs. So clearly, they're not estimating that it will all be for that purpose. They have a wide range of uses, and look, again, this is us looking at the traffic calcs. But really, in order to get to that estimated number of vehicle trips, you have to have more people-intensive uses locate on the site, and that's what they're estimating. And I would, I would invite the applicant to the City of Reno to speak more in depth on this particular point.
May I just have one follow-up question though? What about water? Assuming even one-tenth of that acreage was data centers that used water?
Yeah.
How would, would that change the analysis that we see before us?
That is, that's a unique perspective, and it wouldn't, I guess I'll, I'll approach it from this perspective. When we looked at the water that was available, and this has gone through a state process, what they, they said was available for essentially dedication, for quasi, for, for use. Dedication to the Great Basin Water Company was 314.41 acre-feet annually, and that can't change, unless they prove up they have additional water rights to the satisfaction of the state. And I think Great Basin also has potentially some water rights that they could sell. But Great Basin also has a process they go through in order to take on those water rights, and they may require more water rights, I guess kind of is a little fund imbalance type of thing. But they, instead of, let's say it was 314 was what they got, and then Great Basin would allow them to utilize actually only 300 acre-feet annually. That doesn't change. So if they were to cite one particular use that used all 300 acre-feet annually, then they wouldn't have any additional water rights unless they purchased them through Great Basin Water Company, and I don't know what number of water rights they have, or brought in water, like is currently required through the Stonegate PUD. So that would, they're, they're limited in terms of what they can actually do with water on the site. So if that all goes to homes, or if it all goes to industrial uses, then they use up that particular resource and are left looking elsewhere to satisfy whatever, whatever balance of water they need.
Would that yield an underutilization of land?
I think when you're, I mean, I guess it could potentially. But when we're looking at the master plan land use on the site, we don't necessarily give an order to, certainly at the regional planning level, don't give an order to what can develop first. So we're saying this is the potential use of what the site is, just at the master plan level. And then when you factor in the project of regional significance, we get more details about what they're planning to do, but we don't have a particular timeframe where something has to get implemented over another. And that is, that's just par for the course at regional planning, not talking about us versus the local jurisdictions.
How about other questions? Yes, I see here.
Yeah, I'm a little confused. As it stands now, is there enough water for the existing plan that's already approved?
There is, so the, the agreement that exists currently, the Stonegate PUD handbook requires them to bring in water from the Truckee Meadows Water Authority, and that essentially comes from the pipe that's in the North Valleys, which goes to Fish Springs. So under that PUD handbook, they are required to bring the line down and over the hill into the Cold Springs Basin. So this, and when we're looking at the change in scenarios, instead of bringing in water outside, and bringing in water outside of the basin to support their proposed development, they will be utilizing theoretically, utilizing their water resources that they have available on site. And that went through a state process, I guess it's quasi-municipal water use. So the state water engineer looked at what they had on site, what they've been able to prove up, and said they have X number of water that can be used for quasi-municipal purposes, and that's it. So, but what I referenced in the presentation multiple times is there's trade-offs. When we're looking at bringing water into a closed basin, and it goes, you think about the life cycle of, you know, you're turning on your tap at your sink, and then it goes into the drainpipe and it has to get treated. So that water that is entering the basin has to get treated and then disposed of. And right now, as I referenced in the presentation, the Cold Springs Water Reclamation Facility is permitted for 550,000 gallons per day of effluent. And so if you're bringing water into the basin, again, this is a trade-off, then it has to find a place to go. And this, this overall is being studied by the Truckee Meadows Water Authority, by Washoe County, by the Western Regional Water Commission to find, I guess the best way to say is to find out, determine what water balance is for the basin. And that will be, my assumption is, a starting place for looking at what to do with treated effluent, how much the basin can handle, and then...
Okay, so, under the existing plan, not the proposed, they're still gonna have to import water?
Under the existing plan, they have to import water. There's no alternative, it's required by the PUD handbook.
Okay, so if we approve the proposed amendments, they're still gonna have to import water?
They, there's a like, yes, I would say there's a likelihood, depending, I, I build out, that they will have to. And, and part of what we put into the staff report is that... And part of what we put into the staff report is that at some point in time in the future, when we are reaching, I don't know if the carrying capacity is right frame for the region, but when we are getting closer, I don't know, we've got 600,000 people here, 700,000 people here, upwards of 800,000 people, we will have to bring water in from other areas that I believe Tom was already negotiated these things to some degree. But the the available water resources that we have through the Truckee River System, the Troya Agreement, doesn't satisfy us indefinitely, I suppose.
Okay, and that's without consideration of the data centers?
That any use, any use, yes.
It does or does not?
I would say that all uses proposed in the region are going to have to receive water, and that would include a straight up warehouse, or a data center, or a residence, they have to have service. So at some point in time in the future, we will, as a region, have to look elsewhere beyond the Truckee River.
Well, I've just had Jeremy Smith for the record, and I can address this a little bit. A couple of things. Currently, the 314 acre feet is would be what's available. That's really going to give the project the ability to begin, but there will be further investigation, I think in collaboration with Great Basin Water to identify available, any available surface rights or other water rights that are already in the basin. And if those can be converted to municipal use, that remains to be seen. But then to meet the balance of the 1,000 acre feet that is required for the proposal, either it has to come from the basin beyond the 300, or it's going to have to come from that pipeline from the Tumwa water that comes from the Viva pipeline. And I will say that in terms of the, every two years, we do the Washoe County consensus forecast, we work closely with the Western Regional Water Commission and the staff there, and the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission to evaluate what are, what's the total identified sustainable water resources that we have in our resource plan? And what is our population forecast? And can we, do we have enough water to sustain that 20 year population forecast? And every two years we've done it, we're still well below the identified sustainable water resource value. So we, there's enough water to support growth for 20 years. Every time we've checked for the past 10 years, we do that every two years. So that's always been the case.
Thank you.
Additional questions?
I do. I am concerned about, you're talking about lowering the vehicle traffic. But what, are we talking passenger vehicle, or are we talking semi? Because if it's industrial, and there is going to be that component, if you can't do all data centers, there is that component of semi-traffic going up and down 395 more than it is now. So is that been taken into consideration, that particular component? Passenger vehicles is one thing, trucks are another thing. So, so we're looking, right now, we're looking at, at NDOT finishing a portion of 395, but it's going to have to have another portion of 395 to be able to accommodate that as well.
Yeah, from our perspective, we looked, we're not traffic engineers, but we have one. But we certainly, not on staff, yes. But we certainly looked at the overall, the numbers that were provided to us by the Stonegate Development, and this is our standard operating procedure. But then also looked at the numbers ourselves, just of what the trips are and that impact. And we came up with a number that was in the range of what was given to us by the applicants to the city of Reno. So, you know, that number that we are looking at and considering through the PRS threshold, is something that, that we feel is fairly accurate, had a good getting point in terms of a PRS threshold.
Good evening. I'm Lauren Chilson with GCW, the prepared the traffic analysis for the project. We absolutely have looked at truck traffic. Overall, when you look at the entire project, it's less than 10%, something around 7% to 9% is the estimate. And what's really important to understand with this project is those trucks do not circulate through neighborhoods, through other regional roads, they go directly to the freeway and effectively stay on the freeway. And so for that reason, we felt that, you know, truck traffic is, is appropriate at the front side of this project where it has direct freeway access. It's, it's of a percentage that's not inconsistent with what's on 395 existing. There's certainly many industrial properties in the North Valleys, as you're well aware. So overall, when we looked at it, yes, it's considered, it's reasonable, it's consistent. And for those reasons, don't see that to be any, any new or significant impact.
This is in regards to power in general. I mean, Jeremy and I have been working on the, the overhead power issue. Data centers create a lot of power. They not only create a lot of water, they create a lot of power, too. So do we have enough in this area or on our grid, on the grid, to be able to support that as well? I'm, my concern is no more overhead power, but it should be underground.
Yes, Madam Chair, Jeremy Smith for the record. In terms of the power question, especially around data centers, it's something we're actively pursuing. We know that probably the power demand for data centers is the biggest impact that data centers will have. That process, though, to generate the power and, you know, create the new generation is, is outside of the regional planning purview. It is operates through Nevada Energy and their relationship with the Public Utilities Commission of Nevada. So the ability to serve with power, that's not in our wheelhouse. But yes, I think if we see data centers expanding, we're going to expect that the power demands are going to grow. And one of the facets that we're exploring for, for our agency is the power generation and transmission component, which I think you were referencing. That's project of regional significance. If the power generation is 5 megawatts or greater, and if it's transmission line of 60 KV or greater. And so we're trying to get ahead of what we assume will be a buildup of energy generation sites in Washoe County, which we'll have to see at this body. And we want to have on August 20th, I will mention this later in the direction, we're having a community conversation about data centers and power use and our role. And I think we're going to have a map. And we're going to try and get some feedback on where in Washoe County, where do we have transmission currently and generation? Where do we think it's a good idea to continue to have it? Where do we think it's a bad idea? Try to get ahead of that question so that in our role as the regional planning commission is your, in your role, you'll be armed with more information about, about, you know, where that's happening. But ultimately, the generation of power to get that amount of power that is going to be needed for what we're seeing is this emergence of data centers, that process is a Nevada Energy and PUCN process that we can participate in, but we can't control.
Well, just to add a couple, couple points, and that is that there is an existing regional utility corridor on the site, as is referenced in the staff report. And there is also, through the city of Reno and Washoe County, a utility corridor being proposed that would run, run across somewhere theoretically, the southern, southwestern portion of the subject site, but the actual extent of the corridor has not been identified. And that particular, that particular corridor is really meant to provide some redundancy for, for our region, not necessarily to serve data centers, so.
I wanted to just ask about that. Is it correct that that is in some sort of legal dispute with the applicant?
That is, and we have, we've actually received the smittle and not considered a complete pending the outcome of that process at the city of Reno.
Okay, and I wanted to ask why the 2019 regional plan and not the 2024 regional plan?
And that's, I mentioned that in the staff report, or in the presentation, so it's on the staff report, but, and this was a practice utilized in the past, when we've updated the regional plan. As long as the local jurisdiction, that could be any of them, submitted to the local jurisdiction, the applicant submitted to the local jurisdiction prior to the adoption of the current regional plan, 2024, and that was, I believe, December 12th of this year. The Stonegate application went in before that. So they're able to elect to be processed under the 2019 regional plan, which was ineffective at that time, or they could also theoretically opt in to the 2024 regional plan, but they chose to be analyzed out of the 2019.
Madam Chair, Jessica Prenti for the record, if my, may, if I may address that point. Historically, through this agency's history, when there's a regional plan update and you have applicants before a local jurisdiction applying for a project or a master plan use change, whatever it might be, their expectations are set by what's in current law at that time. Therefore, we're obligated to continue to process the application at the regional level under the plan that was in effect at the time that they filed with the local jurisdiction, unless they decide they want to opt into the newer plan. So that was why this has been considered in the 2019 regional plan. We face this circumstance with every update. We have a little overlap.
Okay, thank you. Did we have any other questions from the board?
Yeah.
Great.
So Chris, sorry, Rob for the record. Chris, did you state that they were saying that this industrial is going to be a data center? Or is it just?
No. What I was stating is that we looked at a range of potential uses of the industrial type in order to get an idea of what the potential, the average daily trips were for the site. So, so we looked at what a, I think if you have a data center, again, not saying that they have proposed anything, but our research showed that there is one employee per about 5,000 square feet of a data center. So when you're looking at the average daily trips and try to true those figures up, the average daily trips generated from, and this is, there's a specific type in the traffic engineer's manual, but that, that number of average daily trips was around 2,000, if it was all 11 million, 11.75 million, eight square feet of data center. But that is not the number that was put forth. So it would be, as we would estimate at regional planning, a mix of various industrial types of uses that would generate a traffic figure.
Madam Chair, if I may, Jeremy Smith for the record. You know, we, when we're modeling the future, and it's honestly difficult to model, non-residential uses, because the variability in what could happen there is pretty high. It's much easier to model residential when there's a clear path of the lots, you know? But we looked at a range of square foot counts per employee. So something like retail could have square footage of as low as 250 square feet per employee. And we utilized that in our modeling work to try to estimate maybe a number of retail employees if we're, if we're choosing retail on a site. With industrial, we'll often use 1,000 per square foot. There's plenty of evidence in our region for, especially in the older industrial areas, for pretty dense employment on industrial sites. We'll also use 2,000 for more of the warehousing uses. And the research that we've done put data centers at 5,000 or greater, so it could be more. Data centers are definitely a low employment use. But we looked at a range of different square footage counts for the industrial land use, and even at 5,000, it's still generated around 2,000 employees. At 1,000, I think it generated almost 12,000 employees on 11 million square feet. And so I think the number that was provided was 9,000 or 8,900 and so. So I think in a range, given a various, a varied industrial implementation out there, there will be upwards of that many jobs at the end. There could be.
Okay, well, yeah, then that brings up another question, if there's going to be that. So first of all, let's just agree that your transportation numbers could be off a little bit based upon, based upon what I just heard. They could be off, they could be high, they could be low, we don't really know. And then now you're talking about jobs. So my question is, out in the North Valleys, it's kind of getting hammered in terms of industrial, but we don't have any, we don't have any commercial. Where do these people go to get food? Where do these people go? They have to go to town. So that generates more trips because we don't have anything, because the land is being used for industrial. Now, wasn't it in 2013 that we had a call out for industrial, there wasn't enough industrial? And now we're this many years ahead, and we're still calling out for industrial? We don't have, we don't have the resident, so we don't have the commercial? I'm just, I'm making a point that maybe industrial might not be the right fit here.
We will definitely have a discussion, but right now we can't.
Right, no, I guess I got questions.
Okay.
based upon Stonegate being there, they just built a new elementary school. So now the question is, if they're getting rid of the houses, what do they do with this elementary school that they just built? I mean, right now, there's hardly anybody there.
You're, you're talking in Cold Springs Basin?
Correct.
we didn't talk specifically, I didn't talk specifically with the Washoe County School District about the underutilization, underutilization of a facility. We talked specifically about the potential impacts to, or the difference between what is existing and proposed. And what the school district, school district is essentially saying for all cases is they have the ability to address overcrowding and step theoretically with a proposal such as a master plan amendment or project of regional significance. They have the capital facilities, they have the path forward identified through their most recent facilities plan, plus, I don't remember the name of the other plan.
Yeah, so Jeremy Smith for the record, the, the new Washoe County School District Facilities Plan is currently under review and will be coming to this body on August 4th. It indicates that the facilities over the next five and 10 years in the North Valleys are able to accommodate the, the anticipated growth. In terms of the, the elementary school, there are other units, there's 1,300 units remaining in this proposed development, and there are other units that remain to be built in the North Valleys region as well. So I don't know if that will fill up the school, but certainly we're not going to be facing an overcrowding issue in any of the schools out there. I think right now, North Valleys is, is pretty close, but they're working to ameliorate that. I think what, what this does is it saves the school district from needing to build an additional high school that would have been necessary, given the 5,000 units. That, that was what I, we heard from the school district.
Chris, was there any mixed use, commercial, industrial plans in this?
There will, yes, there, so there, I don't remember the, the number of acreage for the suburban mixed use, but a portion of that would be used for, my understanding is multifamily, and then a portion would be for a retail center and approximately 21,000 or 210,000 square feet available for essentially retail uses. And I don't know if, what particular ones, but we would look at that as being a grocery store, restaurants, possibly a bar, or something similar to that, Starbucks.
Okay, and what is Traincrest?
Traincrest is a development immediately to, in fact, you can see here, immediately to the west of the subject site, yeah, over there. You can see the mouse moving. And that, I don't remember the acreage off the top of my head, and this is, that is a piece of land that is zoned, I believe, single family, we can go back. We at regional, we used to, there we go, yeah, so it is, I believe, all single family. For whatever reason, I think it is the, the one that is roughly square with, or no, rectangle with kind of a square jut out. I don't know if all that single family designation is Traincrest, but certainly that, I believe the eastern portion, that is like rectangle and a square.
Is that all city of Reno? Or is that?
That I believe is all city of Reno, yes.
Okay.
And in fact, you can see the mixed, the suburban mixed use on this map that is existing, that is proposed, and there are areas outside of Stonegate's boundary that are also designated suburban mixed use, as well as industrial when you look south of 395.
Okay, that was all the questions I have at this moment.
Commissioner Velto, I have a few questions.
All right, yes, we'll go to Commissioner Velto.
So I, I hear these questions about data centers, and I'm trying to understand, does, are making these findings at all affect the regulatory process that's in place for the city of Reno and preclude the process the city's adopted before approval of a data center?
No, it wouldn't. Our, our process is really giving a thumbs up, thumbs down on the, the land use amendment, as well as the project of regional significance. It does not impact. It does not impact the processes that occur at the local jurisdictions. Again, that's Washoe County, City of Sparks, and City of Reno. They would still implement their zoning based off the land use in the way prescribed by the zoning.
So just to be clear, us making the findings and approving tonight is not a mandate for data centers? Because I, I hear these conversations about data centers, and I almost feel like we're putting the cart before the horse, given that you all have done a very good analysis over, even assuming that outcome, what it looks like. So am I missing something? Can you kind of help me understand?
No, I think you, yeah, you, our analysis is not, I mean, it's not saying that there are any particular uses forecasted or owners, aside from what is put in the staff report related to the project of regional significance. And that is to show, again, the estimates that we use to satisfy the regional plan and state law in terms of those requirements.
And would, would anything preclude, my understanding is that the city of Reno is holding a joint workshop to discuss data centers in the coming weeks, maybe a few months, I'm not sure the exact date, I think it's September.
October 1st.
Would anything, October 1st, there we go. Would anything preclude, if the city of Reno were to establish some new process for data centers, would anything we do tonight preclude the city from implementing that process?
Absolutely not, nope.
Thank you so much.
So I got a follow-up question on that. So now, if they come back and they say XYZ can't do this or that on a data center, these guys applied before that meeting, so does that mean that they get this? Because we're looking at the 2019 Regional Plan right now instead of the 2024, which we don't even have access to anymore. So we're trying to make a decision here off of some old data that we're not all current with. So I'll just ask you a question.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, Jessica Prunty for the record. If I may assist, this body is a body of special limited jurisdiction. And so we have to remember that at the regional level, we have specific charges under our statutes for evaluating master plan amendments and projects of regional significance to determine if they conform with the regional plan. In this case, the conformance determination is the 2019 Regional Plan, which is available on TMRPA's website. The modifications is, this body may recall, anyone who was sitting on the body at the time of the adoption of the 2024 Regional Plan, where we call there weren't many substantive modifications to the existing policies, particularly the ones that we're talking about today for the conformance review. What this body should keep in mind in making its decision today is that within our special jurisdiction, we have a special charge. We cannot tread upon the local jurisdiction's jurisdictional authority when it comes to zoning changes. That's on that more micro type of level. So what I envision, following up with Commissioner Velto was discussing, is that you, if you determine what's before you today conforms with the regional plan, then if there is going to be an application for a data center and City of Reno has special ordinances in place for consideration of that particular land use, a building permit, for example, then they will apply those rules that they have adopted at that local level. At the regional level, we do not have any of those rules relating to data centers. At this point in time, the information before this body is a hypothetical potential of what various types of industrial uses. And so I would encourage you to look at it at that 30,000-foot regional level, as opposed to trying to speculate what may, what industrial use may or may not come on play in the future over this very large parcel. And I hope that's helpful.
That is helpful, and I, I want to follow up with a question on that. I think a regional question is so important in that, is the analysis possible with such a wide range of opportunities under the industrial? How, how does the agency do a thorough review with a brand-new land use category in the mix, given so much variability in the outcome? Is, how do you go about doing an adequate review? And is what we're reading in the staff report accurate based on different scenarios?
That's a staff question, not a legal question.
Madam Chair, this is Jeremy Smith for the record. I'd like to take that question. You know, we have implemented in the 2019 Regional Plan, something, our policy PF1, which is our region-wide standards for facilities and services. And the reason that we did that is because prior to 2019, the, the agency largely relied on the local jurisdiction's concurrency management systems, which indicated that infrastructure would be available at some point, without answering the question of this decision moment, can, can we serve this thing we're, we're saying? What's our, you know, can we take stock of our liability that we're creating for our region? And do we know how it will be served? So we upped, upped basically the level of rigor through which we analyze the potential impacts. And it's specifically to those public facilities and services that are identified in state law that are our charge. And that's potable water, wastewater, transportation, schools, and stormwater and flood. And so that is the emphasis that we put into this, from a public infrastructure standpoint, into this report. And we took information from the applicant, City of Reno. We did our own independent calculations of wastewater. So for instance, I don't know if this is in the staff report, but we did look at 175 gallons per day, which is a number for wastewater generation for single-family that we have vetted with wintertime water meter data. And we use that, and that actually creates a wastewater burden that's lower than what is reported in, in the, the application. And so we're really trying to look at, even given the varied uses, the potential out there, right? What would be, what, what are those impacts in those categories? And in all cases, I think we saw, those went down. So the amount of sewage that would be generated under this scenario, based on our understanding of how industrial creates sewage in our region currently, it's not going to be as high as the homes. Likewise, the water use, based on what we understand about how industrial manifests now, that exists, also would be lower. Now, we have been talking about the speculation for certain types that could have water requirements that are beyond what we see today. So that's something to keep in mind. But our analysis is really focused on saying, we're going to make this change today, this is our decision point. Are we sure that we can serve these pieces? Or we, do we understand the impacts that we're signing up for? And what we're signing up for, for those categories that we look at, what we've calculated is it's all lower than it would be under the existing.
Can I just?
Madam Chair, one more item. Jessica Prunty, legal counsel. If this body feels that it does not have adequate information before it, right now to make a decision, you can make a determination to continue the item with a request for more specific information to be brought back at the next regularly scheduled meeting, although I don't know if August 4th is going to be too soon. That's the next regularly scheduled RPC meeting. But I just wanted you to know that, that you have that ability, if you feel like you don't have enough information now, to make your determination.
Thank you. Do you have some more questions?
Just one, I just wanted to make a comment. The only reason I'm asking so many questions is so that I get a, a knowledge base, it's like make the correct decision here. That's why I'm asking so many questions. It's not to knock anybody down or anything like that. It's just for my own information, so I can make the right decision.
Very much appreciated. Yes, questions?
This is Commissioner Velto, I have a quick question.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, did I cut somebody off?
Questions directed to the council.
Oh, okay, well, we have a question up here at the dais first, and then we'll come to Commissioner Velto.
Yes, Commissioner Fleck.
All right. So we're basing, we're judging these things based on the 2019 approval. Even the conditions for the amendment today, I mean, do we use the criteria 2019 to judge the amended?
Yes.
Deals for, for 2025?
Yes, because the applicant applied to the City of Reno before the adoption of the 2024 Regional Plan. So from a legal perspective, as you are looking, sitting in the applicant's shoes, they need to know what the rules are at the time that they apply at the local jurisdiction. Any master plan amendment, everyone knows it has to come up to regional for regional conformance review. So that's why we're operating under the 2019 plan.
Okay, even though they're dramatically changing?
Yes, because of the timing of their submission to the local jurisdiction. If it had come up on December 24th before the City of Reno, we would be under the 2024 plan. But it did not.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, Commissioner Velto, I believe you said you had a question?
Yeah, so Ms. Prunty just raised the potential for a continuance. I would only ask, I can't see who's in the room, so I'm not sure if the applicant is in the room, but I would only ask if that we were, if we were considering continuance, we consulted with the applicant before doing that?
Yes, of course. And I don't know if we want to do that at this time, but I suggest if we would go to public comment before we kind of visit that, because we do have a number of people in the room tonight. Do we have any more questions for the staff? Okay, it looks like we don't have any more questions. We will come back for a discussion after public comment. So why don't we go to public comment?
Sure, we have Manny Basara.
Good evening, esteemed Chair, Commissioners and staff. For the record, my name is Manny Basara, and I serve on the Reno Planning Commission. I've provided a detailed written statement this evening, but I'd like to share a few key points briefly. And on behalf of residents who wanted to participate remotely but are currently prevented from doing so, as others highlighted earlier during general public comment, at our Planning Commission hearing on this project, this proposal received a technical denial on a 3-3 vote, as Chris mentioned earlier. My no vote, shared by Chair Rohmeyer and Commissioner Delbyar from Ward 4, was based on serious concerns about compatibility, public infrastructure limitations, and the vast scale of industrial rezoning. This proposal would entitle nearly 300, 923 acres of industrial development, undoubtedly including data centers, according to the applicant's own testimony during the Reno Planning Commission hearing, in a closed basin with no PUD, no mitigation standards, and no enforceable conditions. Reno still lacks policy to responsibly evaluate or condition data centers, which is why a joint city and commission meeting is scheduled for October 1st to establish such guardrails. City Council deliberations, though leading to approval, were far from unanimous. Several members raised unresolved concerns over water and energy impacts, lack of housing commitments, and the absence of enforceable mitigation. Those concerns must not be ignored this evening. In my view, this proposal does not appear to conform with several key elements of Truckee Meadows Regional Plan, whether it's 2019 or 2024, particularly around prudent resource use, compatibility with surrounding lands, and alignment with infrastructure capacity. Approving it at this time, in my opinion, would signal premature conformance, ahead of clearly established policy infrastructure readiness. As Legal just mentioned earlier, whatever is policy now is what a project would adhere to later. And so we're clear, we're talking about policy here, not processes that can change and do so over time. Finally, the project undermines Assembly Bill 96 enacted earlier this year, which requires Washoe County and Clark to integrate heat mitigation strategies into local plans. The extreme hardscaping proposed would elevate urban heat impacts and conflicts with state-mandated climate resilience goals. I respectfully urge this commission to find the project not in conformance at this time, or at a minimum, continue it until October 1st, or sometime thereafter, when updated policies, community expectations, and statewide climate mandates can begin to inform a responsible decision. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Up next, William Mantle.
William Mantle for the record. Thank you for having me here tonight. Straight up, I'm a layman, I'm not a planner, I haven't been in planning, I might be a higher-than-average-involved citizen in civic matters, but I'm by no means a professional in this capacity. You want to talk about crime? We could talk about crime. This isn't crime. In listening to all the discussions tonight and reading the staff report, I am thinking about a number of these criteria. And frankly, even though I think the staff report is an immense undertaking, quite technical and impressive, I find it insufficient to provide me a complete understanding of what we're getting into. And in those factors, I think population growth, I look at the regional jurisdictions all having a deficit spending issue right now. I don't know if switching this zoning from the residential allotment to the industrial allotment is going to affect my tax base significantly here in the region. It could. And if it does, then I'm worried about the natural resources that we have available, because I did some bucket math, because I'm, again, not a professional in any way, shape, or form, but according to the staff report, we're looking at the difference between 102 million gallons of water a day to 814 million gallons of water per day needed in this project. That is, again, that's my bucket math, from between 314 acre feet to 2,500 acre feet of water, galvanized. That's a huge spread. And because we have to get the water into this area, that means the public dime is going to somehow spend to create the infrastructure to get that water there. But if you're telling me that this plan is going to augment the, the tax revenues available to my jurisdictions, I'm concerned of how I can afford that when we're already in debt spending. That's a problem for me. I'm thinking about changes to the housing and the developments in general here, as Mr. Pierce commented on. I don't know if there's going to be a sufficiency of amenities in this new and revised plan. I'm not seeing suburban mixed-use development any longer in this. It's single-family development, which could contain it, but I don't see any commitment to it. And if we don't commit to tight-knit, walkable cities, then we are perpetuating what Reno has right now, which is in general, drive faraway cities to do anything, which is not what we should be doing, because we know it's not best practice. And again, I think there's just an overall lack of grander contextualization for the information contained within this massive change. And because the applicant has decided that they want to change very significantly seven years after the fact, they could change again. And that's concerning to me.
Thank you. Paul McKenzie.
Paul McKenzie, I live in Cold Springs, for the record. I was Ward 4 City Councilman when this PUD was approved. And it's kind of disconcerting to me that the Reno City Council, except for the people that were on the council at the time the PUD were approved, would turn away from the fact that their requirement for Tumwa water was included in that PUD. I want to give a few facts to, to outline why that's such a concern to me, and given the fact that that is a Tumwa service area under the plan, that the ratepayers of Tumwa will eventually end up having to pay to put water in that development, if you, if you guys approve it and moves forward. This information I'm going to provide you comes out of their Integrated Resource, or Great Basin Waters Integrated Resource Plan from 2024. And I believe Councilwoman Abert provided that to the commission. On page 23 of that, section 1.2.2 addresses the hydrographic basins that Great Basin Water utilizes. Basin 100, which is a closed basin, is Cold Springs, and Basin 100A, which is also a closed basin, is Long Valley. Those two basins, they draw water for, to provide water to the, to the Cold Springs water. Both basins are designated to have water rights permitted, which currently exceed the perennial yield that has been set by the state water engineer. And the perennial yield is the maximum amount of water that can be drawn from that basin for the year. Basin 100 is currently limited to 1,500 acre feet per year, and currently they're using 1,500 acre feet per year out of the Cold Springs basin, according to their report. Basin 100A is, has a perennial yield of 500 to 900 acre feet, and they, they don't report what the current usage is out of that basin. Number one issue, these guys want 1,000 acre feet? Where are you going to get it? There's not 1,000 acre feet available out there, because the state. There's not 1,000 acre feet available out there, because the state engineer will not allow them to pull over the amounts as a perennial yield in those two basins, no matter how many water permits are out there. So they can tell you they've got 1,700 acre feet of water permitted, that doesn't mean anything, because they can't draw it, because it's already being used. The perennial usage is already there. On Section 35, they report on their water supply and their well, their existing well conditions. Well 1, which was drilled in 2001, had a static level of 7.8 feet when it was drilled. In 2023, that level had reduced to 25 feet. Am I out of time already, cuz? I will give these notes to the clerk, so you can peruse them, but sooner rather than later, Tumwa would be, if they are allowed to develop under this plan, without Tumwa water, without them paying for getting Tumwa water out there, the ratepayers are going to ultimately end up paying for that cost.
Thank you. Becky Flannery.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for having me. My name is Becky Flannery, for the record. I actually came with lots of receipts, if you guys would like to review. I have Great Basin Waters report, I have NDAU's report, based on the mule deer that we are losing out there, based on the building, and I also have a gajillion news articles from the Reno Gazette, I have articles on how damaging data centers are. I live in Cold Springs. We love our valley. We moved out there to escape city life. We want to enjoy the freedom out there. We want to ride our side-by-sides, dirt bikes, quads, whatever we're doing. We want the freedom to be able to go and do that, and not live in concrete jungle. We love it out there, we love our stars, we love all this. Now, if you're talking industrial, we also have Anderson Hill, which is a very large hill, if any of you have driven up there. So when it snows, and you have semis sliding all over 395, how are we getting home or to work? What used to be a 25-minute commute for me to go to work can now be anywhere from 45 minutes to three hours. Yes, it has taken me three hours to get to work when it snowed, because all we're getting in the North Valleys is warehouses. We have got Walmart, we've got, what, Rayleigh's? We've got a couple little shopping centers, and we've had a huge amount of growth, and we have got nothing else. We're actually very, very angry people in the North Valleys right now. You can see it in our traffic, you can see that 395 is still not going to keep up with this growth already. Now you put in warehouses. These people do not even know what they're building, but yet they're sitting here predicting jobs, predicting population. I don't really know how you can predict all that when you don't know what you're building. Then you take into account the people for, that are trying to stop the lakeside apartments, right? And you've got city council telling them, well, we need homes. Well, now what we're seeing is Stonegate is taking homes and giving us more industrial that we do not need. We need homes. People cannot afford to live in this city anymore. Our cost of, our wages are not keeping up with the cost of living in this town. We, I mean, I don't know what else we can do to keep this development from happening. My biggest fear, and a lot of us, is we're going to be the next Swan Lake, because that was flooded because of industrial built around it, correct? So what's going to happen to White Lake? Is that going to flood into our neighborhoods now? I don't, sorry, I'm shaky, it frustrates me. That's about all I have. I really, really hope that you guys will listen to the residents, and the residents do not want this. This, we are a basin, now we're going to have semi-noises all night long, and it's very frustrating. We love our quiet little valleys, so if you guys would like to review any of the information I have, I would very much love to share with you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next, Megan Ebert.
Excuse me. Megan Ebert, for the record, I am currently the city council member representing this area. I have met extensively with the community in that area, Cold Springs residents. I've been to several meetings with the Stonegate representatives, several community meetings, meetings with my nab. I attended the Planning Commission that this came to, and obviously, it was at the city council meeting. So I've prepared a statement I'm going to read, just to kind of keep myself a little bit more on track, but my ward includes the North Valley, which is directly impacted by this development. I'm here today because my community has deep concerns, specifically about water availability and the complete disregard for open public space and parks and recreation space in our ward. We've already submitted a water study showing this region does not have enough water to sustain a development of this size. Water is not a secondary issue, it's a critical resource, and this plan as proposed does not account for the strain it will place on our already limited supply. Information has been shared regarding effluent treatment and concerns of the impact on the closed springs, closed Cold Springs basin, talking about bringing Tumwa water in, and what that would do with the effluent use. But nobody's talking about the obvious. That effluent will be created regardless of the water source. It will either come from the groundwater that's used, or from the Tumwa water that's being piped in. If that development is there, and that sewage is being created, it will be in the basin. We need to keep that in mind. In addition, the original PUD included parks and open spaces, trails for the community to enjoy. The original PUD handbook said that you did not need to be a resident to use the parks and trails and open spaces, that kind of celebrated the open space and trails and trees and waterways of that area, and those areas will now be covered by millions of square foot of warehouse if this is approved. I can also say with certainty that this zoning change will allow many, many projects to go through by right, if they are allowed to change to industrial zoning, unless there's cut-and-fills over certain amounts or disturbance of major drainage ways. They will not need to come to Planning Commission for approval, they will not need to come to city council for approval. There will be many developments that will be allowed to happen by right. There will not be oversight on these projects. And to Commissioner Pierce's point, the community is desperately lacking in amenities. We have seen many homes come in, which we're happy about. I live out there because a home was built, but the warehouses are not meaningful jobs. People cannot purchase homes working at Amazon. Thank you.
Thank you. Andy Durling.
Thank you very much. Madam Chair, Commissioners, for the record, Andy Durling, with Wood Rogers, representing the applicant for this case. Given that we weren't afforded an opportunity to present facts on this matter, we ask that you afford me more than the three minutes to provide an actual formal presentation.
This is the public comment, and it will be limited to three minutes.
Okay. Then with respect to just a few items that came up, it seems like we were kind of balled up on this matter of data centers. We have a lot of information we can share with you that hasn't come to your, hasn't come in front of you quite yet. It was presented publicly to the Planning Commission in Reno and the city council. This body, as your legal counsel has notified you, has a much different purview over this matter. Data centers in particular will be regulated in the future by City of Reno Zoning Code. This project utilizes straight zoning, so any changes that happen in the future to the City of Reno Zoning Code, if they enact greater policies or greater restrictions on use like that, they would impact the future development of this project. So this position that, for some reason, we're stuck in time on this 2019 Regional Plan is just not true. Anything going forward, this project is going to be built under the current codes at the time of building permits and entitlements for the project. We did anticipate some data centers as part of it, that was in our numbers for, you know, water usage, traffic, things like that. We estimated maybe about 15%. The rest was made up of a mix of warehouses and advanced manufacturing, based on a lot of different measures, but essentially, the water that they have available, they own 1,700 acre feet, 1,185 acre feet has been adjudicated, and changed to quasi-municipal uses with the state engineer. 315 acres about is available in groundwater and could be a resource now. The rest of it would have to be developed over time, it's surface water. So that water is available in the basin for them to develop. Those facilities aren't there yet, but they would have to build those wells and dedicate them to Great Basin Water, just like you would build Tumwa mains and dedicate them to Tumwa in other parts of town. With respect to just the analysis here, I just want to stress, you know, staff stressed this a little bit, when we are looking at this project from what's approved now, 5,000 homes in the Stonegate PUD, and what could be built, the overall impacts to the community, to the region as a whole, is less. Water usage, sewer generation, traffic generation, all less that would be impacting our region. So with that, I'm out of time. I would love to be able to provide you with greater detail, but not afforded that. Thank you.
Thank you. Sev Carlson.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Members of the Commission. Sev Carlson, I'm a partner with Kemfer Kroll, and I represent the applicant, Heinz Ranch Land Company. I'd first like to reiterate that you should follow your council's advice regarding your limited jurisdiction. Second, I'd reiterate Mr. Durling's request for additional time for the applicant to be heard, and to afford Mr. Durling additional time, so that the applicant can enjoy due process, when we've simply had questions between the commission and staff and public comment. A reason for that is, I need to also make sure that the record is very clear regarding the conversations dealing with litigation. There is no litigation between the City of Reno and Heinz Ranch Land Company. There is litigation between Envy Energy and the City of Reno. Again, I'd reiterate my request that Mr. Durling be allowed to present fully for this board's consideration of items that could use clarification, based on staff's excellent report, and to correct the record with respect to public comment that's been made tonight. Thank you.
Lastly, James Eason.
Thank you. James Eason, for the record, E-A-S-O-N. I'm with Great Basin Water Company, and I just want to start off with, I am here to answer any questions that you may have tonight, or at a later date, about Great Basin. Couple of things I wanted to just point out, we are regulated by the Public Utilities Commission. We do serve in multiple jurisdictions throughout the state of Nevada. We are the largest private or regulated water company in the state of Nevada, no different than Envy Energy or Southwest Gas. Couple of points for clarification, the developer will be responsible for 100% of all the development costs associated with the new infrastructure for water on this project. I think that is critical, and it's very important. We are not allowed, as a utility, to contribute. We are regulated by the Public Utilities Commission, and that is one of the main doctrines, or I guess, main points. When we do our rate case filings, we have to demonstrate that new development pays for itself. Another thing I wanted to point out is the discussion about our Integrated Resource Plan. I know our wells and our assets or our infrastructure has been referenced. I would love to take the time with any of you to go over that report. We are required every three years to file with the Public Utilities Commission an Integrated Resource Plan. It lays out our three-year action plan for projects, and our 20-year long-term forward-looking plans, that identify issues not only in the Cold Springs basin, but in all the other service territories that we do serve. A couple of other things I do want to point out, Great Basin was part of this original project back in 2015, 2016, and we did work with Stonegate as, and also Tumwa, on how we are going to long-term solve the problems of water importation into this basin. It is absolutely critical. We at Great Basin do not want to see another Swan Lake situation that is in the Lemon Valley area, or Silver Lake situation that's just right next to us in the Stead area. It is critical. So looking at the existing resource, which I want to point out, the existing resource that is owned by Heinz Ranch are the most senior water rights in this basin. They are more senior to the ones that we use right now. As stated earlier by Mr. McKenzie, yes, we are pumping about 1,500 AFA. We were part of the adjudication of that basin, where the state engineer went in and readjudicated what the perennial yield is, which is about 2,500 acre feet with the existing resource. And if you add up the water rights that were in the report and what we are pumping, it comes up to about the 2,500 annual AFA that keeps that basin in water balance. Thank you very much.
We have one more, Toni Marsh.
Good evening, Toni Harsh, for the record. I felt like I was encouraged to speak, because you have two city council people, a current one and a former one, and I was also Reno City Council. At the same time, I served as the, on the Board of Governors for the Regional Plan. So I'm speaking because of the importance of this regional significance, and that's what we always looked at. I have a question regarding, and this is going to be to Jessica, regarding Assembly 95, Assembly Bill 95, how does that apply then to the requirements? Because when we're talking about this, and I've spent time at the legislature this year, we're talking about quality of life, and that certainly is regional significance. So how would AB 95 apply to this?
Would that be handled under discussion? Since we're in public comment?
We're in public comment right now.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
If the Commissioners are interested, I'm happy to address that question. I might not be prepared to do so tonight.
Yes, thank you. That's it, just thank you for your time, and thank you for all the good work you do.
Thank you. That is all for public comment.
All right, thank you. So with that, we would go into discussion.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just a point of clarification, the applicant before this body is actually the City of Reno. The City of Reno is who submits their master plan change for conformance review, and is also who submits a project of regional significance for conformance review. That being stated, in the past, it has been common for jurisdictional staff, and I see that we have Reno City staff here, to answer questions, to field questions from the Commissioners along with the underlying applicant before the local jurisdiction. And if this body is seeking more information, you are absolutely welcome to bring them to, before you, to ask your questions.
Thank you. Yes, I think there's an opportunity for more information, given the number of public comments we've received. I wanted to just clarify that, yes, and I appreciate that, that the City of Reno is in fact the applicant, and rarely in our process do we have an additional presentation from the applicant. We usually rely on the staff presentation, that is our process here, and it would be unfair to give someone 15 minutes to speak, say, when everyone else is afforded three. Thank you. Do we have discussion around the comments we heard, or the project?
Turn on mic, first thing. This is Rob, for the record. Yeah, I, I just had, I had some discussion here. I'm just, I'm having a real hard time finding the findings, and I did find the 2019, like you said. For one, Ward 4, District 5, as a county, is getting inundated with industrial, and the residents have made it very clear that they have to travel to town to get to everything. everything. So putting straight industrial out there, cutting down on the homes, not necessarily putting some commercial out there, I just, I just don't see that as benefiting the, the people of the valley. The roads themselves are awful. We know how, how bad the freeway is. We know how bad the traffic gets. And I just don't see how we can find a finding on that with all the, with all the stuff going on. There was a promise made with all the industrial that went in on Virginia Street, that they would redo the street. It still hasn't been done. It's full of potholes. So there's a lot of promises that have been made in the past and I haven't seen anything being taken care of. Public resources are lacking on this. If you look at the goals of the RTIP Regional Transportation Improvement Program, you'll see that the goal here is to improve the transportation network, but yet if you look at chapter two, it tells us how this project should fit in, but it doesn't with the congestion reduction, maintaining infrastructure conditions and safety goals. Then explain to me how making residents travel 17 miles to town to get their basic needs from big name restaurants or hardware stores or a Costco is going to help them. I, I just don't see it. The land out in the North Valleys is being taken for industrial. It's not leaving much for commercial. You can't put a Costco out there. There's not much land. Yes, the water and sewer aspects are fantastic, but with the water savings, if there is a data center, that's going to go out the window. We don't know what it's going to be yet. And then the bright lights are going to endanger the wildlife and kill the dark skies because on data centers, you have to protect your building. So you have to have lights. You have to have security. You have to have heat. You have to have water. So let's look at this from a realistic approach and put ourselves in the current resident's shoes. More trips to town along a freeway that needed to be done 10 years ago, lack of infrastructure, you'll see that this is not a good project. I vote no based upon the quality of life of the residents in the area. In fact, the last time industrial needs were looked at was 2013 and it's incompatible with today's needs.
This is Commissioner Velto.
We'll just go through the dais and then we'll go to our online commissioners.
Real quick though, Chair, point of order, I, I understand that the applicant is the City of Reno. However, I think a lot of the concerns that commissioners have may be addressed by the applicant at the city level. So I would request that they be allowed to give a presentation.
I can ask Mr. Foster if he'd like to give a presentation.
Is that who the applicant's representative is for the underlying project?
The applicant is the City of Reno when it comes to regional planning. So I'm asking Jeff Foster, who's here.
Oh, yes. If, uh, if he'd be the person to be able to do it, I think that'd be helpful.
Yeah, the city did not come with a presentation. I would be happy to answer questions on some of the water.
And I, if I can just clarify my request, I, I would think it'd be helpful to have the applicant representative from Stonegate give a presentation.
Well, they had to speak under public comment and the question of fairness then is implied, like why would the applicant's representative be afforded more time than any other public resident?
I think the reason for that would be that the applicant's representative is in a unique position to address some of our concerns on a technical level and.
That might be true and we could ask for a continuance in this case and maybe then the City of Reno would like to work with the applicant representative, but at this time the applicant is the City of Reno and they are the ones that would be giving the presentation.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
For the record, Jessica Prunty. Just so that my prior comment was not misconstrued, in the past, we've had, at the commission's pleasure, we have had the local jurisdictional representative along with the applicant before the local jurisdiction give presentations if this commission finds that the information being presented would be useful. If at this point in time today during this meeting, you would prefer to continue the item and have that presentation packaged together for this commission at the next meeting, that's an action that you can take. But just to clarify, that there has been in the past presentations made by the underlying applicant to this body for informational purposes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would like to hear a presentation from the applicant.
Okay. And we had some technical expertise from the Great Basin Water Authority. I would also like to hear more from that particular agency. I would ask the applicant's representative if they're open to a continuance or if they'd like to go for a vote tonight.
Andy Durling with Wood Rogers representing the underlying applicant. Yes, we would be amenable to a continuance to make formal presentations to this body. We'd request the next available meeting, which I believe is August 4th.
I think with noticing and various board members being awake, would you be amenable to the last, there's two meetings in August? It's August 28th. Time, date certain.
If the noticing for the 4th works, that's our preference.
I don't see how that's possible. 14 days? Yes.
In terms of noticing, this is Jeremy Smith for the record. In terms of noticing, we follow the state law with regarding posting our agendas, which is four days in advance of the meeting at a minimum. That's the noticing that's required for this review process is, is to post the agenda in accordance with state law, which we have done. And we have yet to post the agenda for August 4th. So it would be possible, I think, to get it on there and we could, we actually have the agenda ready and could get it posted as soon as possible if we did want to add that, if you, at your pleasure.
Does the rest of the board feel comfortable with a continuance?
I would rather vote on it now.
Okay, we have one commissioner who'd like to vote. I'm, I would be prepared to vote, but I'm also open to additional information.
I, I'm prepared to vote, but my opinion is different from what I'm hearing from some of the other commissioners. I actually feel like industrial is a really good use. North Valleys, I'm actually surprised they're not more supportive because usually they're asking for less housing, less traffic and the fact that it's going to provide more jobs. And in comparing the original plan to the proposed plan, I can meet all the findings. So I would be in support of this project. In addition, I was, I'm probably the only board member or a commissioner left, I should say, that has, was here for, for the 2019 plan and also for the 2024 plan. And just to clarify, there's no impact between those plans in this decision.
This is Commissioner Velto. I, I echo the sentiment of the prior commissioner. I, I would be comfortable voting in favor of the project. However, if, if my fellow commissioners would like more information, I would also be open to that.
The applicant is open to August 4th. It seems like the vote, I'm getting an indication there would be a split vote here. I, I can't say for sure, but I will leave it to the applicant to decide, do you want August 4th or do you want to vote?
Andy Durling, for the record, we would like the continuance to August 4th, please.
Okay. And at that time, you'll work with staff to work on a presentation. Thank you. Can we get a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to continue this item to the August 4th meeting to provide this body with additional information from the underlying applicant and the City of Reno.
I second, go ahead.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we will see you next time. Right, moving on to reports from the director.
Thank you very much. Madam Chair, this is Jeremy Smith. Quick director's report, I want to point out that we do have a, a meeting coming on August 4th. We're aware of that now. And we'll, we'll be adding this item, the continuance of the item to, to August 4th. And our plan will be to publish that agenda tomorrow. I think it's, it's ready to go. So that, that would be my, my plan there. And then our regularly scheduled meeting is August 28th.
May I make a request?
Of course.
Could we have the August 4th meeting with a opportunity for online Zoom interaction from the public?
Madam Chair, Jessica Prunty for the record. Yes, we can, if this body chooses to do so and now, and the new chair, we can absolutely agendize and provide for the option for members of the public to participate by Zoom. This agency pulled it off quite well during COVID. We'll pull it off again. We just have to notice it properly, which is why that was not available this time.
Thank you. Okay, well, we'll, we'll add that language to the agenda and provide the ability for folks to join by Zoom. Also, want to announce, which already came out, but on August 20th, we're having a community conversation about data centers. That's going to be at the Discovery Museum and it's going to be an opportunity to get public feedback, right, that we can bring back to this body, bring back to the Regional Planning and Governing Board, really focusing on what is TMRPA's role in the energy sector? What do we think about power generation and transmission and where we prefer it or don't prefer it in Washoe County? And also what are the kinds of strategies and guidance that we may be able to collectively provide in crafting potential ordinance around data centers? So those are kind of three main focus areas for that meeting. With that, I think we've all been here, so I'll stop my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to council's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Prunty for the record. I think I've said quite enough tonight.
Very informative. Thank you. Do we have any requests for future agenda items?
Madam Chair, I would like to make sure that Great Basin Water is included in that presentation on August 4th, if we may.
Thank you.
If there, if Great Basin Water is willing to come back on August 4th and give us a little bit more detailed information. Thank you.
And do we have any general public comment remaining?
We have none. Oh, we have one.
William Mantle for the record. I just would ask that if there are going to be presentations on August 4th, if those could be made available to the public as soon as possible for review, because that helps us consume the information and come more prepared for the meeting. So if there's going to be any PowerPoint presentations or videos provided to this body, if they could be somehow also available in some kind of public capacity before the meeting sufficiently, that would be great if at all possible, is my request.
All right, did we have any last written correspondence?
No, there's none.
Okay, I make time to adjourn. Do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.